Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ellen, you want to come forward? Not just the yard of the month, but the yard of the year. Congratulations.
Thank you. What a surprise.
Yeah, I don't think you get another commendation that reads, "Whereas Ellen and Mark Christofferson have created a beautiful yard that contributes greatly to the beauty of their neighborhood and to the city of Sioux City. And whereas is right and fitting that city leaders commend and thank Ellen and Mark for the time and effort they have put in, put forth in creating this beautiful and peaceful setting. And whereas we're grateful to them for using their time and talent to beautify their corner of the world in what is obviously a labor of love. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the city of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, do hereby commend Ellen and Mark Christofferson of 6841 Palm Valley Drive on being named the recipient of the yard, Sioux City's Yard of the Year, and thank them for making Sioux City a more beautiful place to live. Thank you for what you did. Congratulations."
I was told if I came here today that Mayor Scott was going to be giving me a big check also.
I was out of town all day.
Thank you, and thank you to Jim and his committee for selecting us for Yard of the Month and Yard of the Year. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. You did a great job again this year.
We can't do it without your support, and we're a team. Jessica Johnson, Cheryl Reynolds from the city, Gene Hansen from the Sioux City Journal, Mimi Shanahan, and Lori Taylor. That's our team. It's our 11th year. It's going good.
Good job.
Thank you for being so involved, Jim.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for being so involved.
Yep.
No problem. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Fiscal, Effective Fiscal and Public Policy Committee Wendy LaCroix, please come up to the microphone and tell us why you would like to serve.
Hi, I'm Wendy LaCroix. I would like to serve because as a community resident, I guess, a mom of three kids who I hope to raise in this city, also a business owner. I own a bookkeeping company here in town for small business, small business bookkeeping. I think that I'm pretty good at what I do, and I would like to use my skill set to hopefully give back to my community.
Excellent. Questions? I'm glad you applied. I think your business experience will help on this committee immensely.
Thank you.
I really, I really do. You can see the big picture.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be helpful. Well, thank you for making the application. Any questions?
No, none.
I serve on that committee, and we are looking for new members, so I appreciate your application as well. I do agree with Dan. Your business experiences really will help on some of the topics. Not all the topics are, you know, 100% financial. Some of them are gathering information for a process that we might adopt or something like that, but I promise you there's interesting discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, Glenn Moore, Jr. Glenn, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, just because I'm just handsome, that's probably going to pink.
You get a pass then. There you go. Is that how it works?
One of my things is serving, why I want to serve, because I love being in the community. I love helping people. I run a recovery home called Soulwood Development, and I just recently started my own roofing business as well. Maybe two weeks ago, I just became a Shriner as well, so I'm accomplishing some accomplishments. And, you know, one of my things is that, you know, the differences, the difference between running a recovery home and, and having a recovery home in the community, my goal is to be able to have a recovery home that's in the community, not only just in the community as a, as a resident, but in the community being active. So my, my goal is to teach guys how to not only stay clean, but to help them get involved with what's going on with the community.
I'm trained.
And that's, that's important. So I've always been a community type of guy, and being able to interact with people in whichever way I can help make the community great, and I'm all for it.
Questions? I appreciate you're making the application, and I understand you will be on the, you would be fulfilling our seat in the religious part of it.
Yes.
Of the committee, which I appreciate that that's being fulfilled. That's been vacant for some time now, and it sounds like you have a lot of energy to...
I have a lot of.
Get some, get some, get some things done. And, no, I just appreciate what you're doing with the Silver House, and I hope you continue to get good results there.
Yes, sir.
And so I just want to tell you, I appreciate that you're taking the time to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let you know.
Yep, great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Glenn.
Letitia O'Kane? You had a pretty good reference, too, on that application.
Thank you. Hi. Hello.
Go ahead. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Yeah, so my name is Letitia O'Kane. I've lived in Sioux City for the last eight years, grew up just across the river in Sauso City. I have had an interest in becoming involved with one of the city commissions or boards for the last year or so. I think it's very important for us to be involved in the community and for us to serve others. I had a discussion with Dan Moore about a month ago, and he was stating how there was a need for the Inclusive Sioux City Committee, and I think that's something that I could really help Sioux City with. I, I am a biracial woman that, that grew up in a Hispanic household, and I work every day with training and onboarding and everything like that, so it's something that I see every day, and it's something that I feel is really crucial and important. I want everybody that lives in Sioux City, that works in Sioux City, or even just spends time here to feel like they have a place at the table, and to make sure that they feel like that Sioux City is a part of them as well.
Excellent, and I'm glad you applied, and thank you for doing so.
Yeah.
I think you could add a lot to the committee.
Yeah, I hope to.
As, as with the former person, you two have a lot of energy and, and desire to fulfill the mission of Inclusive Sioux City.
Yes, I really do.
So thank you.
I noticed the organizations that you have volunteered with previously, so, and it's, it's significant and good groups, and so I was just wondering, what is it that attracts you? What do you like about being a volunteer? Maybe we'll get other people to hear the same thing and get more people to apply.
I, really, the better the city we, that we have, the better time that we have being in, and a lot of it does have to do with my kids as well. I want my kids to be very involved, and I want them to know how important it is for us to keep getting better. And I think Sioux City is a great place, but there's always room to get better, and I want to make sure that my kids see that as well and that they can keep growing along with it, so.
That's terrific. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the regular consent agenda today. Items through three, three through 13B, considering to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by the council, a council member. If you want to speak on an item as I read it, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is reading of the city council minutes of October 18th. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of October 12th. Five is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept a 2021 burn justice assistance grant. Six is a resolution temporary closing various streets in downtown area on November 22nd for the IBEW Downtown Holiday Lighted Parade. Seven are resolutions adopting plans and specifications for the proposed construction of the Floyd Park Golf Drainage Improvements Project. Mayor? Yep. I just wanted to point out to everyone in the write-up that this project is funded using American Rescue Plan funds for the project, so we'll probably be seeing more and more projects come before us that will use those types of funds. This is a project we didn't do a year ago because we had the water running the wrong way, or it was a deeper manhole or something? Is that the same project?
I think it's been a couple of years, hasn't it?
Yeah, we bid it and then didn't award it.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Yes, that is correct. About two years ago, the manhole was not sized correctly, and then we had to wait for the Glen Avenue reconstruction.
Okay, thanks, Gordon. Eight is a resolution amending the payroll complement and the position classification manual by adding a position of airport manager at the Sioux Gateway Airport Brigadier General Bud Dayfield. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a contract to Plains Mechanical to the Tyson Event Center Water Soft and Replacement Project. I want to abstain on that item, please. B is a resolution awarding a contract to Hydro Clean for the Floyd Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Cleaning and Televising Project. C is a resolution awarding a contract to InstaForm Technologies for the 2021 Utility Lining Improvements Project. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Nelson Commercial Construction for the 2019 Sidewalk Program Project. B is a resolution authorizing a check to Gallagher Risk Management Services for the purpose of public general liability and excess liability insurance. C is a resolution approving fund transfers for the month of September 2021. D are motions approving total payments issued for the period of September 2021. Eleven are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell a portion of the vacated North-South Alley abutting 30th and Panama Street. The petitioner is Jacob Gunea. B is a resolution proposing to sell the south one half of the vacated 33rd Street abutting 3263 Virginia. The petitioner is Adeline Riggin Nitter. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list. Come forward if you have questions. Thirteen, receipt of minutes. See the list. Come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Pass is 5-0. Recommendations on planning and zoning. A is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 1110 27th Street from zone classification suburban commercial to general commercial. The petitioner is Mohammed Zahad. Planning and zoning recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Go ahead.
Mayor and council, this one was, was heard and discussed. Obviously, we've got a property that's already existing that formerly functioned as a gas station convenience store on the site, but given the rezoning, it needed to go from the SC to the GC district to have a chance of operating. That's what we did on a 6-1 vote. Did take a lot of input from the neighbors, especially on hours of operations, which was limited in another action.
So what's the difference between suburban and commercial? It's just the ability to sell alcohol?
I'm going to have...
I mean, I'm wondering how this got changed, because nothing, back when you did your new zoning overlay, this thing was operational.
Chris Madge, Senior Planner. The property was originally zoned BN, which is the neighborhood business zone, which the zoning district itself had the limitation that no business could operate past 11:00.
Which is good.
And then under the new code, it's the community business zone, so, or suburban commercial zone. That does have gas station and convenience store as a conditional use, and the sale of alcohol is prohibited under that zone, so that's why the petitioner's requesting the rezoning.
Specifically to sell alcohol?
Well, they were selling alcohol before there.
Yeah, that was, that was considered by the Board of Adjustments on a separate act.
But my point is that why, we basically downzoned this at a time when the business was still operating, I think. This, this did...
When did that zoning change from what it was when it was operational?
2015, and it was operating at that time. That's what I understand, how you guys could do that, but...
The zones are similar. The use, I believe, was also a conditional under the BN. However, it was operating under the 76 code as a non-conforming and continued to do so until it was red-tagged and closed.
Was that kind of grandfathered-in type?
Once it's red-tagged, the grandfather...
Yeah.
And it hasn't operated.
That's right. I mean, higher to the red.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And has operated for more than a year, so both of those situations would cause that conforming status to go away.
What happens to the red tag now? When the owner, new owner, does he, he's got to obviously comply with whatever the deficiencies were before?
Correct, correct, yep.
Does he have 90 days to do it, or how does that work? Does, I, I ask only because I know that's set now for two years. Is it going to sit for another two years?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the status of the red tag on it.
Well, the status is it's red-tagged, and the status is he's got 90 days to get a plan.
Well, that's what I wondered.
But Darrell, that's acceptable, and then six months to do the work.
Jeff Hansen, Community Development Operations Manager. The owner has been making repairs since the property was placarded. If you recall, this was a structural deficiency as the portion of the building was actually settling in the back corner, and all of those have, repairs have been made to date. They still have interior and exterior repairs being made, but they are in progress.
So hopefully then he'll be able to, it won't be a six to nine month...
Yeah, I would expect it to be quite a bit shorter than that.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Chris, would you clarify for me again the 11:00 PM, because it sounds like that some of the neighbors were opposed to the use until, unless they could have the 11:00 PM time enforced. Is, is that part of this GC, general?
Wasn't part of the rezoning request, but the Board of Adjustment in improving the conditional use permit did make that a contingency of the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
To close at 11:00.
So that's already in place, then?
Yeah, for them to operate, they needed two primary things. Needed to change the GC on the zoning, and then they needed a conditional use permit for alcohol and tobacco, and we need, and the Board of Adjustment placed an additional restriction on the hours of operation to kind of take them back to where they were under the old operations.
The petitioner did state that was their intention.
I was going to say, it sounded like that's what they did at their other properties.
I think the concern would be some future owner that would have that same business plan, that conditional use permit restriction would remain.
And the neighborhood's fine with it?
I doubt so.
Some of the, I think it was two of the responses were fine with the request with the hours of operation. I believe it was three that were opposed to the, the business plan in its entirety.
What was the radius of, the size of the area that you sent out notices to? Because it says there were 51 notices sent out, and I think I only, it says three were in opposition, so the vast majority of them didn't have a complaint?
No response, correct.
So how far does that go? Two blocks?
200 feet plus right-of-way, which I believe Court Street is 60 feet wide, so it'd have been 260 feet from the property.
And we had some written, and then we did have a few people who showed up to the meeting who I don't think provided a written response, but their key questions were around hours of operation, which was a Board of Adjustment question. Yeah, clarity, at least some limitations around it.
Those fire, those pumps are awful close to the street, but they always have been, so I guess you're not going to change that, but those have always been way too close to the street, I would think, but anybody to be heard?
Petitioner hasn't provided any site plan with any proposed changes to the layout.
Hearing is, go ahead. The hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. I'd like to wait one week just to make sure no neighbors come forward, if you guys don't mind. 15 is a hearing and ordinance vacating the north-south alley and the block bounded by West First Street, South Center Highland, South Myrtle. The petitioner is Jose Villa. Planning and zoning recommends approval. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, this is a simple vacation. There was just discussion about wanting to make it their own property. Discussion from the petitioner, no objections. Pass 7-0.
Anyone to be heard? Hearing is closed. Pass is 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule on this one?
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Second, third. I'll move it. Pass is 5-0. 16 is a hearing and ordinance vacating the east-west alley abutting 2109 Grandview Park, or Grandview Boulevard. Petitioners Evan Fitch, planning and zoning recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Go ahead.
Pretty much the same as the last one. It's a vacation. Private owner wants to go ahead and, to go ahead and acquire the property. There were no objections or really concerns. 7-0.
What's that? Oh, the hearing's now closed. I'm sorry. Pass is 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving the rule on this one? Move that. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second, third. Second. Pass is 5-0. 17 is a motion to uphold the October 12 decision of the planning and zoning denying the request by Darrell Prevail of 3817 and 1/2 Sioux River Road for variations of the Neighborhood Conservation Design Standards section of the municipal code. I'm not going to move that, so...
Yeah, I didn't know if you needed to move that, so I was, anyways, I'll go ahead and get into it. So this one comes to you on appeal from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The planning, staff made a recommendation to deny this particular application. The Planning and Zoning Commission split 3-3-1, three in favor of granting, granting the, the owner the ability to do what they requested, three in denial, and then one in abstention. So it comes to you as a denial.
Of course, Ross. I don't abstain. Come on.
So you guys get to make the hard decision today, because you've got especially an even number, but, so I want to go and usually you guys want summaries of kind of pros and cons. So for those people who voted against, number one, I think they relied upon the staff's denial request as part of it. Part of that denial request, I think, came because the property is not going to be built to the design standards for residential. It's going to be a steel build, a steel building. It's going to be easily visible from the road, so it's not going to be kind of hidden away, you know, in a back acreage or something like that. And then the other, and it's, and it doesn't come close to me, the design standards, to anything around it. And so when we looked at the design, we looked at the area and sent notice to those areas around it, they had standard home build types, and so this really, from the sense that I got from the members who voted against it, they just weren't comfortable that this was close enough to give a yes to. So, and then for those who voted in favor, looked at the, the standard as being, the, the, the desire for this ordinance is to not negatively impact residential home rates and to, to cause problems with ongoing building outside of the building code. Given that this is an acreage, it's more rural, yes, it's visible from the street, but I think the attitude was, you know, the homes around it are all developed. We're probably not going to have a rash of new development of steel buildings like this as a result of, of granting this, granting this, and so there was leeway given to the owner to just do as he chose. He's on the hook for his market value and, and those sorts of things, because he's building something unique, and so it'll, if he wants to do it, it'll be, you know, his, his to build. So we, we kind of, like I said, we split down the middle, and, but formally, it comes to you as a denial, because there's not consensus among the Planning and Zoning Commission to grant, to grant a full approval of it, you know, so the, so the petitioner exercised his right to appeal to you for the final decision.
Been able to discussion out. I'll move the item. If I get a second, then we can discuss. If I don't get a second, then we don't take...
Well, I'll second it. We might as well discuss and, and...
But just to get it on the floor.
Through the motions.
There water, city water and sewer at this site.
I'll leave that to staff or to the petitioner, I think.
Petitioners here. Got to state your name and address.
Darrell Prevail, 3817 and 1/2 Sioux River Road. It's a well and septic tank.
And there's no long-term whatsoever provision to run utilities out here, where we would see a huge increase in development at this time, right?
Chris Madge, Senior Planner. I don't believe there's any plans on Sioux River Road to extend any utilities. If you recall, this is a plat that was approved, I believe, five, six years ago, that did have a communal well, some of this little notch out here that all the properties in the development do connect to.
That, that was a 2017 plat?
Yeah.
Well, as I asked Jeff today before you talked, Darrell, I remember when Whispering Creek was developing, and there were a lot of houses that didn't fit in the neighborhood at that particular time. Still, some are built today that I'd say, boy, they're not like anything else out here. Not that there anything wrong with them. They're beautiful homes, but they're different. So, and I get that you don't like these metal buildings. You never have, and I get that, but when do we allow something that's different? When is it acceptable in one neighborhood, but not so acceptable in somebody else's? I mean, there's a guy that's sitting in this chair years ago, and he built one of the first flat-roofed homes at, at Whispering Creek, and we all wondered, what the heck is that going to be? Well, it fits very well in there now. It didn't when there were two or three houses on that hill. So, you know, that's what I don't get, how we get to determine what fits in the neighborhood, because what doesn't necessarily fit today may fit there 20 years from now. That's my problem.
And I think that's why this provision was put in with some of the concerns over some houses that have been built that at the time were viewed as not fitting in that neighborhood.
Where is it a problem in our town? That's what I want to know. If we have a problem, show me where that problem is.
That's also why this code section also does allow for approval through planning and zoning in city council.
Answer my question. Where do we have houses that are a problem in this community? Where, what, cite me some examples, is all I'm asking.
I believe one of the items is on Mickelson, was one of the houses in particular that was of discussion at the time.
But it got built.
It did.
And you didn't, you didn't deny at the staff level?
That was pre-15, correct.
Chris, let, let me ask in your write-up, I want to make sure I understand this, that the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed 22 requested variations from design standard requirements. Were those all denied then, or were some approved, some were denied?
Some were approved, some were, I don't think any of, no, there was a couple that were denied. Some were a discussion between the commission and the petitioner on meeting, at least on the frontages that face either a street or a parking lot, that those frontages meet the design standards, but maybe the rear could be metal or a different material, so...
Was that for houses or for commercial, though?
Both. We did have another house at the same agenda that was reviewed as well.
Okay, because most of those are commercial that you're talking?
Correct.
I think, if this is, I think, one of the, I don't remember a lot of residential design standards that we, reviews where we've done like this before. A lot of them have been...
These were the first two for residential.
This is the first two, yeah, and there was another metal building and a different discussion, but it was way back, and it was a different design.
A question, sorry, I don't mean, a question I would have is, with our design standards, would, I mean, I, I know it's all the rage in some places now, or like the Shouses or the More Morton buildings. I know that's corrugated steel on the side, but it does have a pitched roof. Would that meet standards or no?
That was actually what the other house was, and, yeah, the only piece of the design standards that they're requesting the waiver from was the materials. Everything else was more the standard house design.
And that came to P&amp;Z on the same appeal process. Different, a few different standards, though, and a few different scenarios than this one, different design, and that was still a 5-2 vote, so still a split vote, but it passed, so it doesn't come to you on appeal.
So we allowed them to do that?
In that situation, and there were some different circumstances, but not everybody was in a, in agreement, so, I mean, metal, metal design is not, I would say, I think Steph would probably agree, the metal design is not really in the code for residential housing today. I've seen a few of them, but they're all out in the country. They're not fitting.
There's been a couple that have been built out... There's been a couple that have been built that aren't within three hundred feet of another residential house or other development. In that case, then this code section wouldn't apply since they'd be the first. So, there's a couple that have been approved without Planning and Zoning Commission approval. It's that distance to other existing housing that caused both of these to come forward.
Jason, you did a great job talking about the pros and cons.
Yeah.
Made me think about, and either one of you can answer this, but, but I'm wondering, there's a site rendering in our materials, is that what we're looking at?
Yep. Yeah, that, yeah, I'll let the petitioner speak to that.
Is that what's being proposed here?
Yeah. I would let him speak to his design, so, we looked at the same materials.
It's, uh, made out of metal, but it has straight sides on it with a rounded roof, just like what we're looking at right here.
But are you gonna do it to make it look like that?
But it looks like this?
Is it gonna look, is yours gonna look like?
Yeah, the front is gonna be similar to that, sure.
Well, is it gonna have that front full of windows and all of that, or is it going to have the metal across it?
Windows and a doorway there, yeah. I mean, I don't know if I'm gonna go with that many windows, but.
Right.
But.
You'll have a nice front, huh?
But in fairness to the, to the applicant, he's not held to this.
No, and neither one of the two that we reviewed in this last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting were necessarily held to design. We asked, there, I would say they brought forward proposed design that we looked at, but, uh, the, once they issue, and I'll hand this off to, um, staff, is, is that once they go through and start to apply for a permit, that's really also where there comes in some more scrutiny.
Right, the site plan would still have to go through our development review committee, uh, since it is an infill development, so that would have to be reviewed. Uh, but we did ask for, on both of the items, for actual elevations that listed what the materials were, we didn't receive that on either one, we did receive these, uh, images instead, so, you know, we haven't actually received any building plans of what the house would look like yet.
Have not.
Yeah.
The reason I can't give that right now.
Yes, sir.
The company that you buy these from, you have to, uh, send the twenty-five percent deposit, then they send out the blueprints and everything, and then you show it to the city. They won't issue the permits or the, the site and how it looked, the design until, uh, after you, uh, have put money down. When I went to the planning zone and they turned me down, so I didn't wanna send in twenty-five percent of the house value without knowing I'm gonna be able to do it or not, because they're not gonna refund it on me.
Yeah, that makes sense. Is it that, is, is the same company then the one that constructs it?
Uh, no, I have a, there's a guy out of Holstein, Iowa that's built a lot of these and.
Okay. Just kind of a global question also, Jason, that you made me think about. This kind of piques my interest, okay?
Okay.
So, if I have an empty lot in my neighborhood, you know, globally, I don't think, you said there isn't anything in our ordinances now about metal, metal residential structures, but if I.
Metal requires Planning and Zoning Commission approval.
Yeah.
But if I wanted to do something like this in my neighborhood, then, I, I mean, I could, because I would wanna cite his, his building as an example of why you allowed it there. I'm not saying that would be a problem, but would I be able to do that? Because we haven't really looked at the entire community to see how all of this would fit in, or, or do we even need to? I guess it's just a question I have, really.
So, I would, I'll answer it in one way. The system that is set up now, it says that, listen, if you're gonna operate outside of what is standard, you go to staff, staff have to issue it based on the code, and then they can go to P and Z, or they can go to you for appeal. Hopefully, somebody looks at it, makes a, a case, by case judgment. If you want it to stay that way, then that's the way it is today. If you wanted to develop standards around metal buildings, that's a different discussion about how we would change the code. At the P and Z level, I think there was some same discussion, does COVID and materials change the equation in our housing market? Are there some metal homes that would fit in very nicely if they're designed right, and, you know, there are more, larger lots, acreage-type fields, could that be something we should be looking more at? I think there was some general discussion, but we don't have answers today, we have a process today, not, not, not a specific set of regulations.
Fair enough, thank you.
Well, and I think too, I mean, obviously, you have to think of precedent, right? Like, you're going to be citing precedent, and I understand that argument, but I think on the other side, you also wanna make sure that you're evolving with the times, you know, if they are having new designs of new homes or different things, like the mayor is citing a flat roof, like, you probably wouldn't have thought of that, you know, unless mid-century modern or doing something different, or you have these shouses now, I mean, that are going in, whether it's A-frame or more traditional, but that have that other material, I. You want to allow, and even tiny homes, right? We've had that discussion, and how can we change the lot size? How can we adjust? How can we evolve to, to meet that need, especially when it comes to infill, but.
Yeah.
Affordability.
And affordability, exactly.
And I think the other piece of the equation that probably made the commission wrestle on both sides of this was, is that this isn't a subdivision where you're talking about ten lots built all the same way, side by side, we've got kind of a rural acreage where one isn't really visible and one is, and that, that moved the needle for some of the members.
And that's where I struggle, is, I was talking to a few people about this today, and I said, well, if you can't build this here, where would you be able to build that ever, you know?
Well, I would, the answer is probably more the county, I mean, that's.
Yeah, exa, yeah, exactly.
You move outside.
I meant in the city, yeah, in the city, I just.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But you may have answered that with the mayor's question about will there be development coming out that way with regard to water lines and sewer lines and that kind of thing. I mean, if you can make that distinction, you know, and.
That it's not any.
Somehow capture that in, in an ordinance, that would, that would at least spell out all the rules and, of the regulations we have.
Where's the placement on this? Where the, will act directed?
Oh, it's on the back, it's on the, the back of the home, would be up against the nature center property.
Where does X mark the spot on here? Where's the house gonna be?
Like where the mouse is now?
No, right, right there, you got your, just back behind that, right, right there, yeah.
Next to another building?
No, there's a little garage there, uh, to the, uh, left. That's a camper sitting.
That's his property, right?
I think, I can't.
So, how far is it from his site to the house? I know the property's within three hundred.
I'm all, my house is, is over three hundred feet from both my neighbors and five hundred, over five hundred feet from the people that are across the street, the highway. The only thing you'll ever see on the front of this house is just gonna be the face of it, you can't see the sides.
And on the face of it, are you gonna put some siding and not just have like some kind of corrugated tin or something like that on it?
No, 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 I was gonna do like.
I mean, you really don't want it to look like a hog house or just a quant sit.
Like a cedar siding and, uh, windows and stuff like that.
But there's another image on here, I think, that was, yeah, that one's a little bit better.
That's a ki, that's the kind of structure we're looking at.
Right.
Well, it, the one I was doing has got straight sides on, these, these are rounded, uh, and, uh, not that type of siding on the front, like a wood cedar for siding, stuff like that, log cabin siding on the face of it.
It's not rounded like this?
Oh, it's straight like this, and then just a half moon.
More like that, where you have a straight section.
What are the roughing material?
Roughing material?
Steel building.
It's steel, it's all steel.
It's all steel.
It's curved steel like a grain being turned on inside.
Johnny, Bill Johnny's marked it out in morning sun.
Yeah, I know, I was thinking of that, too.
But it is.
Sarge's now, or whatever. Um, the other question I had, or just for clarity, was that the neighbors said they were fine with the design, is that correct?
Uh, there was no objections, uh, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to it, I think he had mentioned he had talked to his neighbors and.
I sent you guys, I gave you guys a piece of paper with the signatures on it.
I was gonna say, I was pretty sure I saw something that was signed.
So, uh, no, there, there weren't necessarily objections, and, I mean, I personally wasn't surprised that, given the distance between the neighbors, um, but, but, yeah.
I would just note, we do not send notification on facades, because there's no filing fee. Uh, so, we didn't send out a notice, but, yeah, the petitioner had a couple of the neighbors, uh, sign letters of approval.
Chris, Dan asked the message, or the question earlier about, uh, or noted that you had reviewed twenty-two requested variations from the design standard requirements. How many of those did you actually approve or had, ended up being approved, or were they all denied?
I would say that, those are the ones that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed, uh, so they've reviewed twenty-two since twenty fifteen. I would say probably the vast majority of them were approved, uh, maybe not exactly how the petitioner originally proposed it. Again, working with a petitioner and either a various facade being, uh, meeting the design standards, uh, then the metal on the rear, the side, where it's not visible from the street, uh, I'm only aware of a couple that have been denied in their entirety from what was being proposed.
So, for the appeal process, if we voted to go along with this, uh, does the municipal code have to be, the requirements have to be amended before?
No, so the way the code is written is that we as staff cannot approve something that does not meet the design standard.
Yes.
Uh, but it does grant the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then by extension, city council, the authority to waive those rules.
Okay.
But that's the process that is being undertaken, so, it's not necessarily a hard set rules, it's just that we as staff can't approve.
And what would, I, I'm kinda curious, what would happen if his neighbors were opposed and Planning and Zoning accepted it?
Approved anyway?
Approved it anyway, what would happen then? Would they have the right, would they?
They would have the right to appeal.
Yeah.
To the council, good, well, I wanted to make sure of that, I just didn't want.
It, you know, and I, and I, I never, I rarely bring this up, but it's a radically different process from the time that I was on council, where a lot of stuff came to council. Now, if it can be settled at Planning and Zoning and everybody's happy.
Right.
No one comes to council, and it actually, I think it works smoother with more happy results, um, uh, across the board, but this is the one situation that, you know, kinda has made its way through.
Yeah.
Well, now, gosh, we keep jumping at the same time, sorry, man. We're on top of it.
Excited about that.
Yeah. The other thing, that's what someone brought up to me that I was talking about, is I don't want to have this continual where there's appeal, 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 and they just come before us.
Well, this, this process's been in place since twenty fifteen, and this is one of the appeals you can remember.
Yeah.
Because the, the vast majority of the time, it doesn't happen, and, and, and it was, it was, you know, the other.
And I don't think this is setting a precedent where everyone is going to run out and.
And the, this one was a fair, close call, honestly, I could see both sides of the argument very well across the board. We don't wanna set precedent, we don't want, you know, a ton of metal houses, if we do, we probably want some regulations around it, the other side of it is, is that, well, there's a reason that we make a judgment by judgment call, and this is maybe one of those, and so, it's, it's a tough choice.
Stop me if I'm incorrect, okay? Jason, just jump in, say stop.
Okay.
Okay, so, Planning and Zoning had before it a motion to approve the variation. We had a, we.
We had a recommend, we had a motion before us, his petition, which staff recommended denial of, and, and so, then we took on a motion to approve and split even.
By virtue of the three, three vote, it failed.
It failed, we then, then we informed the petitioner of the right to go to council, cuz if, he had not exercised his right, he wouldn't be here today, um, and therefore, he's exercised that right to come to you and have you make the final decision.
Or, with the motion that's been made and seconded, then, a yes vote would be to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that would be to deny the application.
I, I'll leave that to, yeah.
A no vote would be.
To allow him to build.
To allow the variation.
I'll leave that to your legal, I'll leave that to your legal department.
Amend the motion, if you want to uphold the appe, the appellate guy here, you've gotta amend your motion to accept his appeal. You, you vote no.
If I should have made the motion to.
Well, you can, Nicole already, that's why I didn't make a motion. Nicole already told me, if it looks like the majority of the council wants to allow him to build, you need to amend your motion.
Nicole DeBois, city attorney, the code provision on the appeal allows you to reverse, affirm, or modify.
Right.
So, you have the ability to ask for any of those actions, but you would have to, to modify the motion to do so.
Put through all your motion and make a new motion.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what I'll do then, cuz it, well, I, no, I mean, so it could go, I mean, it could be five oh to uphold the.
Could be.
Planning and zoning, so maybe we should take that vote, I, then, but I think from the discussion, it sounds like the motion would be to reverse, reverse the Planning and Zoning, um.
Correct.
Recommendation.
Sorry for interrupting, I mean.
No, it's okay.
That's one more, you could move to amend the motion that's on the floor, that's one way that you could do it.
Well, I realize that, so that'd be a motion to, um, amend the main motion to reverse.
Correct.
The Planning and Zoning decision.
Correct.
I'll make that motion to amend then, to reverse.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question? Where staff stand right now? Still with the denial?
Staff recommendation remain the same, correct.
Okay.
Now, in their defense, they have to, because of the code.
Yes. But, but the code could be amended, right?
Sure.
But not today. Darrell, you wanna say a few more words, then we'll see if anybody else wants to talk?
God, we got a lot to say, yes, but I mean, it's just what I wanna build, you know, it's my, I, I did all the acreages out there, it was thirteen acres. I built both the houses, all three of the houses out there.
Right.
So, it was just the last two acres I got.
You wanna try something different?
Yeah.
Are you gonna live there?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Now, let's just get clarification on this vote, what are, how, how's this vote?
I think if you vote yes, you're allowing him to build the structure.
Correct, okay.
Amending the main.
Correct.
To deny.
Reverse the plan and zoning.
So, then we do, we vote on the main menu and then go back, and then we'd have to vote no on the other menu, men.
That's the only way to do it, because there are two motions.
Right. So, you'd vote, if you wanna let him build, you build, you vote yes now, no when I, when we vote the other, I don't wanna confuse you, but that's, so if you want him to be able to vote.
And now, are we voting here on the amendment?
I have.
Motion for.
The vote open on the original motion.
Okay, so you gotta call the roll.
To uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning.
You gotta call the roll on the amended motion, because that's not what's in the computer.
Vote on the amendment then?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will call, vote on the amendment.
Look at her, you don't think.
So, yes, does it, no, doesn't.
Yes, we'll approve the bill.
Well.
Anyone else?
Anyone else be heard?
No. All right, the roll, please.
This vote is to reverse the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and allow him to build.
Yeah.
Correct.
His metal building. Greckin?
No.
Moore?[1611.71]
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Okay, now, we, if you got to vote no here, or Pete would vote yes, correct, Nicole? Do we have to vote again? Okay, do you guys want to withdraw your motion and?
I'll withdraw.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good luck. Make it look nice.
Lots of windows, Daryl.
Yeah, windows and cedar plank.
This decision's appealable as well though, correct?
No.
To district court maybe.
Yeah, that's one of his neighbors complained.
At this level, we're the final authority.
Okay.
I'm sure the. Anyway, hearing and resolution.
This is a PNC action, no.
14 approving the proposal to sell one half of the vacated east west alley abutting 2226 Councilman Street. Petitioners Emmett and Lena DeHardy, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Hold one moment, please. Are we on, I'm.
Eighteen, aren't we?
Oh, we're on eighteen.
That was eighteen, nine.
That's what I just read.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on just a moment.
No, I didn't skip nine.
I jumped ahead on the voting because I tried to cancel that last one.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. It's gonna pop up with an I and I will make sure that it registers for the number eighteen. Did it come up yet? There it goes.
Passes five zero. Number nineteen's hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of crab's car rental lease sixty-one fifteen Mitchell Street in the Donner Park Urban Renewal area. I'll move that.
Second. But that, that popped up, Lisa.
Yes.
Agenda I, nine.
We, it just needs to come off of the.
She'll take care of it.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
That passes five zero. Open, the hearing's closed. Yeah, I guess I did. Twenty, our ordinance is amending chapter ten point two, untitled Parking and Parking Meters and chapter ten point three, zero, untitled Miscellaneous City Rules of the Road. To amend certain definitions, provide an additional restriction and provide penalties. I'll move first reading.
Second.
I think it's to address that access aisle, isn't it?
I was gonna say, I was.
That's marked with a cross, with cross, uh.
Hatching or stripes? I was just surprised that we had to do this. It's not already against the law or against an ordinance?
It is, but that's why you got to amend to act the same as the state.
Oh, okay.
Caleb, you, you had a hand in this drafting, didn't you?
Wasn't sure if you wanted to comment or not. Caleb Christofferson, Assistant City Attorney. Uh, what you conjectured at is correct. It's the sort of diagonal hashed areas in parking lots and on streets where they've been set aside for pedestrian use.
There's signage? There isn't signage, is there, usually on those? Because you're.
Not necessarily. Um, no, I, I guess I haven't seen any.
Usually it says van accessible or something like that usually.
On, on some signs, there are.
Yeah.
In particularly the disabled parking places, there, there may be signs that say van accessible. Many do, many do not.
Thank you, Caleb. Passes five zero. Anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-one is a resolution approving change order number one to the contract of W.A. Klinger and connect with the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project Phase Two. I'll move that. Second. I would like to, I would, we're not gonna say names today, but thank the people that made this commitment to finish this project and speaks highly of their commitment to our community. So I'll leave it at that until we announce their names. How's that sound? Passes five zero. Resolution authorizing directing the city manager to purchase property insurance. I'll move that. Second. Had to wait around, but I know the commission is well worth your time, so we're glad to have you stay here today. Passes five zero. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens be here? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello there. Tyler Johnson, four zero zero five Orleans Avenue up in Morningside, right by that library. Uh, the concern is about that library lot. I live directly parallel from it. I could throw a rock out of my window and make into that parking lot. That's how close I am. Uh, currently the signage in that lot states that you can be there anytime um from not, it's from six in the morning to nine P.M. at night. There is a group of people that are taking advantage of this signage. They meet there about daily, maybe about every other day. They meet there about eight or nine cars. They make noise, they litter, they bring down the community there as a whole. And even if you put in like earplugs, you hear them coming from a mile away. So there's no real peace in your home. Um, I've talked to Sergeant Haddings and I've also talked to Helen on the library board. Um, both of them near back. There is, the police have been getting complaints about them. The library's been getting complaints about the litter. I'm just here today trying to figure out what a possible solution could be. Um, obviously people go to that lot because there's a shopping center there in town. There's also food trucks there, the library's there. So you can't really restrict the loitering restrictions, but I'm just curious what can be done. Because it's not like these people meet there and they're part of the community in any way. They're there to play their music, have fun, leave a mess. So just kinda curious what can be done in regards to it.
You're talking about the paid part?
Yeah, well, the, in the Morningside Library Lot, there's a section of it, from what I understand, that it's public and then the rest is.
I grew up as close to that as you, what you're talking about, aware of the neighborhood and.
Okay.
I don't know, uh.
I've seen it regularly too. I've driven by in that area. What did, it's just right there. What did?
You, it usually is daily. Um, I haven't been there this past weekend. I was dog sitting for my friends and then I know we've also had some inclement weather. So obviously they're not there when it's snowy or rainy, but for about like the last five, six months, it's been building to daily, yes.
Night or day?
Uh, it starts anywhere from about noon to maybe about lunchtime, twelve to one, and then it goes up until about two in the morning. Now, I cleared with Sergeant Haddings that if I'm at my property, if I'm at my home and I look out my window and I see everyone there and it's like nine, ten, I can call the dispatcher. They'll have someone come by and, you know, kick them out. So the point that they're there from like nine to two in the morning, that I can solve on my own just by dialing up nine one one.
I don't think we can do anything about the other stuff, but.
That's what I was gonna ask is if you had called Sergeant Hadding at any point and they're in there, because I think that that is, you're just gonna have to deter that behavior from them coming back and calling after those hours. I haven't seen them there during the day. Um, nor do I know what recourse we could have necessarily with that during the day. But yeah, it bothers me if they're littering as well, but I, I have seen them there loitering.
Okay. So I mean, as long as the problem's just been made aware of, I do feel hurt in that regard. Um, I have every intention to move from that property because even where it is, the traffic's gonna be an issue nonstop. You can't make somebody lower the engine of, the volume of their engine. I just wanted to see something could be done because I confronted the group face to face. I just thought maybe if I said, hey, it's making it hard for me to live here, can we come to some middle ground? They really just kinda got in my face and harassed me about it and said with the signage up, there is nothing I could do. So I guess I just wanted to come here today and.
Yeah.
Are they hanging out, like just listening to music and?
It's all relatively fun domestic behavior. It's not like they're harassing anybody, but they're, they know what they're, they're to do. They totally in person.
You know, there's a trash can in that lot?
I'm not entirely sure if there is a public can in that lot. There, I think there should be by the live.
A trash can. It's not one, there's not a trash can by where they're at, but there are some that are outside. But I'm, I'm sure they're not walking over to the trash can to utilize it.
But sometimes.
We used to play football at night there.
Well, these guys are just revving their engines up and stuff. I've seen.
They told me precisely that they want to be the loudest in town. So that's the recreational goal they seek to fulfill is to create noise. Um, so that's, I mean, if, if that's what they're gonna do, that's what they're gonna try and do.
Yeah.
Well, and even, I mean, we do have a noise ordinance. I mean, they, if they are revving their engine, you can call the police as well.
Well, so my uncle.
And they don't have a decimal reader, but.
Is on the force and I talked to him about that. He said that noise ordinance only affects music, not, not the engines. Otherwise hardly like motorcycles would be an issue with that constantly. So does that actually affect engines?
So.
Yes, but they haven't arrested anybody on that.
Because you have to have a decibel reader and so you would have to catch it while they're doing it. And so my point is if it was say five P.M. and you can't kick them out because of the time, if there was an officer with a decibel reader with an earshot and caught them doing that, then you can make a citation. The reason that, the reason, is that not right?
I don't think they have one that works, but I don't.
Oh, yeah. That, then it would be if they have a decibel reader that works on the P.D. and I don't have that answer. But the reason it's difficult with motorcycles, and I'm sure Pete can attest, is because you're driving alongside. It's tough to necessarily get a read if you're driving next to one or having one pass you by. But, right, Pete? I mean, am I right in kind of that?
Well, they, what, what they used to do, Alex, uh, when we were actively involved in, in noise ordinances and, and violations and uh, they would, the decibel uh reader, they could park on the side of the road and the car goes by, they'd pick it up. And I, I don't know if it was eighty, ninety decibels, but.
Yeah, I forget.
Then we would issue, the police department would issue citations and it would be like an equipment violation. And then they'd ask them to modify that and then they'd set up once a week out on Eighteenth Street by the maintenance garage and have them run back through again. And if they were below the level, then it was okay. Uh, I, I'd be surprised if they're doing anything remotely close to that right now, but, but I really don't know for sure. But Nicole, there's, there's not a, an nuisance ordinance that would, if it continued that they could.
You'd have to post the parking lot to allow them only to park an hour at a time. You can do that.
Well, I'm just talking about the noise level, though. Not, I don't want to restrict the parking lot, but if, if the noise continued, couldn't we, couldn't the city issue a notice to abate that part of it? They can still gather probably, but.
Sure, we do have a chapter on noise control in the ordinances and there are some broad provisions that talk about a noise disturbance, which is a sound that annoys or disturbs a reasonable person with normal sensitivities or which injures or endangers the comfort, repose, health, hearing, peace and safety of other persons. So there's, are some options that we can look at. And I'll work with Caleb Christofferson um to see what options there may be available.
Good luck.
Good, yeah.
But I, but I will say that.
We can enforce fireworks ordinance. I'm, I don't want you to hold any hope we're gonna enforce.
I, I will say that I have not seen.
I'm a lot more realistic than she.
That would, that would be a real irony, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I would agree with the mayor that I have not seen um any prosecutions related to this since I've been with the state.
In a very long time, I'm sure.
In a very long time.
Tyler, I would like to say to you, thank you for coming.
You bet.
Takes courage just to come in and talk about your issue. You're doing it correctly. You know, it sounds like you're going through the proper chain of command. So thanks for doing that. That's, I mean, I wish there was something that we could do, but it sounds like there's a lot of loopholes.
Clarification at this point, though. This is it.
We're verifying what you're saying. There's not a whole lot that we can do, you know, and some people are just not as respectful about the space and the, you know, things that they mess, they leave behind. We dealt with that on Wesley Parkway a little bit. That's why I asked about the trash cans. We installed a few extra trash cans and they started getting used, so.
I mean, I would encourage you to continue to call the police.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, if it's bothering you, A, after hours, or B, being obnoxious in, within the hours, I would, that's what I would do.
Okay. Um, I just had one more question. I think I already know the answer, but I have asked Sergeant Haddings and Helen on the library and they didn't really know how to respond to it. I even went to sitting planning on the other floor and they didn't know how to respond to it either. Is this one of those like eighty movies moments where I get a clipboard and a piece of paper and I actually make like a petition of people in that area having that exact same complaint? Because there is an apartment building there. There is a lot of residential homes there, as well as the library staff there and other residents and businesses. If I could get fifty or seventy-five people on a piece of paper saying, we don't like the fact that these people get here and do this, would that have any sort of mo, like movement or am I incorrect in assuming so?
You want my opinion?
Yes, sir.
Everybody has their own. I doubt if it would do much good. If we can't have a way to have them be in violation of some law or ordinance, we're not just gonna throw people out of a public parking lot because, I mean, there are lots of places in town where people stop and park at night. Sometimes, you know, there'd be people, let me just put it this way, I'm an old guy and, and we used to have those drives on Saturday night with old cars, right? When COVID, we couldn't go anywhere, so we did that, right?
Mm-huh.
Well, the reality is there's probably a lot of people that didn't like us downtown.
Shooting the loop. That's what he's talking about.
I've heard the term before.
Yeah.
Right. And it happens out there, by the way, because after they leave here, they go out to Morningside.
Yeah.
So there'd be lots of people that don't want people doing that, but we're not gonna stop that type. That's my opinion. Now, if they're truly violating the law, then we should enforce it. But listen, we, again, we didn't, we can't stop three hundred and eighty-three people from shooting fireworks off. We're certainly not gonna sh, stop people on noise ordinance because you have to find them in the act. They have to be able to test them. And if I've got one of my old cars out there that's maybe a little loud, you think I'm gonna rev it as loud as I can when a police officer's in the parking lot? I'm not gonna do that. Nobody is. That's a problem. So that's my opinion. These guys have their own. I don't know what it would be.
Okay. Well, thank you for the honesty. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Pete?
Uh, just a quick acknowledgement, I guess. Uh, I, I wanted to say that I went to the fall grant ceremony that MURD put on last week or tell you that I did. And uh, it really um was a very good, I, I want to say maybe fifteen grants, fall grants from MURD that uh generated just a little over a million dollar investment in between county and city. And it, it really is an impressive ceremony, but the thing that really stuck out to me in twenty-seven years now, uh, MURD has distributed over forty-four million dollars. And uh, it's, uh, it's amazing. I would encourage nonprofits who have a need, they do spring and fall grants routinely and, and to fill out a grant and if you didn't get it this time, hopefully maybe another time. But, but the board of directors over that period, all of those who volunteer, which is no easy assignment. They, they sign on for a six-year term and that's a pretty healthy term. And they do a great job and Mike's on going out, Mr. Colette, and, but, but I've watched them now when they changed the law and been going to the meetings as an ex-official member for a, a couple of years. And they, they have a group of people, I don't know how many, Mike, are on the board? Twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty right now.
Twenty right now? They're really committed to this whole process and trying to help where they can to make improvements in the community. And uh, they, they do a great job. But it was impressive to watch and to see the excitement of the people who received the money. So if you ever get a chance or the next person that ends up being the ex-official member.
Did you have to fill out all that paperwork?
No, no, not as, no, that's only if you wanted to vote, I think. But um, but they, the legislature changed, I think, the laws that required uh, an ex-official from the city council and from the board of supervisors.
That thing would be that thick.
Oh, yeah, I, I understood. And they, they sent it out to like, you know, with me, eight brothers and sisters, there'd be like five hundred pages.
I know. And you have to remember every dollar you borrowed in the last twenty years.
Yeah, but it's, it's a great, great organization and I really am thankful for everything they do and.
Where do they get the, most of their funding, Pete?
Well.
A lot of people don't know.
Well, I think entirely their funding comes from the Hard Rock Cafe.
It does.
You know, I was gonna say cafe, but it's not a cafe. It's a casino. But they um, and, and it seems to be doing really well because I think they've had six or seven consecutive months that they've set records. So there are people going to the Hard Rock on a regular basis and, but I, I want them to, to, to know as well.
Reinvested.
That their, uh, their investments are doing wonders for a lot of people and a lot of agencies and cities and nonprofits. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them because I think they do a great job and they don't get noticed enough. But thanks. That's all I have.
Truly.
I don't have anything today.
Alex?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is um, there's an opportunity. I wanted to invite you and anyone else listening or here in the chambers, um, an opportunity on Thursday, this coming Thursday, uh, from ten thirty A.M. to eleven thirty A.M., it's gonna be in the Yaki Room at Morningside University. Um, Ray Cole is going to be speaking. He's the former president and C.O.O. of Citadel Broadcasting. He came out with a new book. He's actually a Briar Cliff grad, uh, Sue, well, Sueland native, uh, grew up in Iowa, but he is, he's had quite a career um and learned from a lot of, uh, a lot of influential figures. And so he wrote a book um about his experience and anyone that wants to go can receive a signed copy of the book for free um and just kind of hear about some of those experiences. So it's this Thursday.
Ten thirty Thursday?
Ten thirty Thursday. Ten thirty Thursday and it's in the Yaki Room. So it's open to the public and as long as the supplies last, they'll give everyone a signed copy of the book. But, and I should say too, all proceeds are going to charity. So everything from the book is going to charity, which is pretty exciting too. That's all I have.
Just a young guy. I got elected to the council.
See, and I've never met him or known.
Oh, he's a great guy. A great guy.
Yeah, he is. He really is.
Dan?
Yesterday I attended the one eighty-fifth Air Refueling Wing. Uh, change of the Chief Master Sergeant Joseph Donovan relinquished his um responsibility to Chief Master Sergeant Ronald Lorenzen. Um, and the mayor was there and other council members attended. What I want to point out about that, it's a reminder that the one eighty-fifth Air Refueling Wing is a strong, strong partner of the city of Sioux City and the city of Sioux City is a strong partner with the one eighty-fifth. That was acknowledged many times yesterday with the mayor. And I want to thank the mayor for um leading the way for us to.
leading the way for us to have that strong partnership with the one eighty-fifth, and it continues to grow. It's probably, and Mike, you, I think you might agree with me, it seems like it's the strongest it's ever been. And I didn't realize either, or appreciate maybe, until yesterday, when a couple of people that know what our situation is with our partnership and how strong it is, how many communities across the country do not enjoy that kind of a partnership. And it was just really, really refreshing and uplifting to have that acknowledged by both, both sides, so we need to continue to grow that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, I would affirm what you just said, and, and as Pete and I were talking, those ceremonies actually send a little chill for me, and if you have a chance to attend those, they're, you don't have to be part of the city government, you don't have to be part of the guard, you have to get on the base somehow, but I think you can arrange that, but it's, it's well worth going to that. I drove to Des Moines today with the Chris McGowan and Barbara Slonaker from the chamber to have a discussion with the Department of Revenue regarding this twenty-two percent increase in residential properties for multifamily, which does, by the way, include assisted living and nursing homes and all that stuff, it's, it's not just apartments. And so I would encourage everyone that owns those type of properties to file your appeal by Monday. Just because it's going to a certain amount doesn't mean that you can't appeal it at the local level, but if you wait thinking the state's going to overturn that twenty-two percent, first of all, I, I didn't come away from that meeting feeling very confident in that happening. And second of all, you have to remember when they do an across-the-board twenty-two percent, some areas of this town, the property values don't increase as dramatic as they do in other areas of the town. So you need to appeal no matter what, and you need to get that appeal filed by Monday, so that at least you reserve those rights to have a sit-down with the city assessor and that board that they have that oversees those appeals. I can't stress that enough, I hope the news media picks up on that, because we need people to understand that if they don't do it by Monday, they have no appeal rights, and they're stuck with that for quite some time, so I just wanted to make sure we understood that. I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.